All right. I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is a time for any concerned citizen to speak to the council on an item that is not on the agenda. Jack, if you could come up to the microphone.
Sheriff Williams, I just wanted to talk to the city council and the mayor, of course, too, about the impending problem with the police department. You guys are going to be losing another officer in the next 30 to 60 days, max, and we need to start working together on how to figure out how we're going to maintain 24/7 coverage for the city of Jefferson. I think that the city's attorney, of course, with council approval, should probably start meeting with the county attorney and trying to figure out an agreement of some sorts. My biggest problem is, one, I don't have the manpower to cover shifts, so if we are, the citizens need to know that it will just be emergency calls only from the sheriff's office. All other calls will just be logged and given to the PD officer that comes out for the next shift. So there's a lot of issues coming up, and I think we need to start working rather quickly to try and mitigate this problem as it's very near, and it's a huge concern for me.
I do have a question on... Now, this would take a 28E agreement to do for you to cover?
Yes, even for 12-hour shifts that we've kind of, that me and Mark have discussed that may need to be covered, the county supervisors would like a 28E agreement set in place. Otherwise, well, we had charged other towns in the past that had their own police department that needed coverage. It was $100 an hour to cover the deputies' overtime for them to cover those hours plus mileage. So $100 covers mileage and fuel. So that's something that I'd like to get worked out soon rather than later.
Okay. And would that, you know, be looking at creating like a unified law enforcement district or...
No, that, the hourly rate would not be. That would just be for the emergency calls only.
Okay.
If we wanted to look into unified law enforcement, that's something else that we'd have to sit down and discuss again.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jack, and this probably isn't fair, but I had someone ask about that, you know, a lot of the new sheriff's deputies were former Jefferson officers. I guess my answer to that was, if not Green County, it was going to be some other county. Is that kind of how you feel, too?
Yes, that's 100% accurate, and I believe that's probably going to be 100% accurate for a while until something's fixed. Because for Heathence, for instance, took a very significant pay cut to come to the sheriff's office, and to me, that says a lot. And we've never, I don't go and ask PD officers to come to my office. They usually submit applications. I currently have two applications on my desk from current officers now waiting for another full-time position.
Anyone else? Thomas?
I don't have much to add, but I did come on behalf of the Board of Supervisors. John Muir asked me to come and just relay that, you know, if the city is interested in joining a 28E agreement with the county, we are open to that conversation, and I'm happy to work with the city and your attorney to draft the necessary paperwork. But the county is at the table and wants to work with you, and so I'm here partly as an emissary of the Board of Supervisors. I would say, though, my own, I think it is now an inevitability that the PD will be unable to provide 24-hour patrolling for the city of Jefferson. I don't know how soon that will be, whether it's in a few weeks or a few months, but at some point, the PD will lack the manpower to provide that coverage. If the county were to assume responsibility for some of that law enforcement coverage, Jack would need to expand the number of deputies on our sheriff's office force, which means we would create new openings, which means more police officers from the PD would likely apply for those jobs, exacerbating the problem. I think we're on the cusp of a downward spiral that requires urgent action. The county attorney is in an odd position in county government in that although the police department is an organ of the city government and they report to the city, the officers also report to my office. Every crime that occurs within the four corners of our county gets prosecuted by the county attorney, and so police officers come to my office to submit their reports, to ask questions about the investigation of crimes, and to ask legal questions. And I'm sure Bob doesn't want the phone calls at 3:00 in the morning when an officer has a question in the field about whether or not he can kick in the door to a house or search a car. So my office works very closely with the police department, and I value that relationship a great deal. And I'm very concerned about what the future may hold for the police department and for the city. So I just want to underscore that I think this is a problem that deserves immediate attention, and on behalf of the county, we want to work with you to address what we perceive to be a problem of mutual concern. And anything I can do or my office can do to work with the city, please let me know. I'll be at your disposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
I, this is, I guess, a concern I would have. We may be at the point where we have to do what we have to do, even if we don't like it. But I know, like, when I was on Grand Junction City Council, and they had an agreement with the county for some time, that, and it just wasn't going to be feasible, they were looking to maybe going back to city police. And I, I mean, I think, once again, we may have to do what we have to do, but I don't want that, you know, new thing to have to necessarily be forever.
Exactly, yes.
Because I think, you know, and who knows? As been pointed out, there's just, we're all drawing from every police department and sheriff's departments drawing from an ever-shrinking pot, that that seems to be what's going on. But if, you know, that, I just wouldn't want us to see it be. And then in the sheriff's department, fairness, they always tell Grand Junction, we're over there more than what we are in Scranton or Rippey or whatever, too.
Right. All right, we'll move on to consent items.
Jeremy Cartwright, is he replacing somebody that went back to school, or is this a new
I'll make a motion we approve consent items.
I'll second.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Sloan?
Aye.
Weetrick?
Aye.
Zamalek?
Aye.
New business?
Item A, consider approval of $6,000 of additional professional services to Bolton and Mink for extra observation services of the Chestnut and Adam Street water main improvement project.
So this request is being made. We had originally estimated this construction project to be about a four-week project. They're in probably about six weeks. They probably got a couple left, getting down to just services and then cleanup work. But we already expended what we had anticipated for this, and so we had made the request for additional fee of $6,000 for the work we're doing. We had talked about it at the committee meeting last Tuesday. So I guess if you have any other questions, but that's the general reason. It just takes, this is taking a little bit longer and a little bit more hand-holding for the contractor than what we had originally anticipated.
Yeah, this did go through the committee, and we did recommend, or we would recommend we approve it.
I'd move to approve.
Second.
Aye.
Weetrick?
Aye.
Sloan?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Item B, consideration of approval of $13,700 to Atura Architecture Proposal to Include Engineering Costs for Animal Shelter Construction.
We talked about this at the last meeting. It approved with Architectural Fund $39,000, knowing that there's going to be some engineering additional fees to it. So that's why we're bringing up those $13,700 worth of engineering fees as part of the contract. And again, those costs are paid for, they're not paid for out of city tax dollars. There's a separate fund set aside that, you know, that this will be paid on.
I'll make a motion we approve this.
Second.
Aye.
Sloan?
Aye.
Weetrick?
Aye.
Zamalek?
Aye.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Item C, consider resolution requesting reimbursement for the Iowa COVID-19 Government Relief Fund.
In your pack, it's a resolution that was provided to us. We need to pass in order to be qualified for reimbursement for expenses. Melody has been tracking those by departments. There's not a lot of expenses. In fact, we have to figure out, you know, will it be worth filing? But we want to track them anyway. They're about $1,200 so far. It's pretty limited what you can get, but figure out, we'll pass the resolution and see, maybe they'll expand what we can use it for, too.
I move to approve.
Second.
Aye.
Weetrick?
Aye.
Zamalek?
Aye.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Item D, consider first reading of an ordinance increasing water rates by 3%.
This is an item that every year goes to the Water Committee to look at this, and they, we actually budget for this. We put 3% increase in, and that's the maximum increase they can look at. The cost, after studying it, the costs continue to go up, so 3% has been recommended to add, to go up, and that would be in effect probably about December 1st building.
So...
Go ahead.
So I had someone contact me with this. I mean, this wasn't exactly my opinions, but I feel. So they were, they are a lifelong resident, and they feel that water quality has gone downhill in however many years. Got it. I'm just, some points here. And then another question, they wondered if the EPA find, this is where this 3% is coming, but you said that this is always budgeted in.
Yes, it's always budgeted in.
And then a question for families, is this becoming, just, is the water rate increase becoming too expensive for families? I mean, maybe those are all kind of just general...
Go ahead.
...unanswerables, but that was, I said I would say that.
I think that the idea is that we, there's, our input costs are out of our control, and those continue to go up, so we have no choice but to pass this along. And if we don't do that, then we get stuck with, you know, what happened in Perry, for example, and they have, they weren't doing that, and they had major, major problems that cost a lot of money. So being able to do this to keep up maintenance of things and keep up with the cost of doing business is why it's there.
Do you remember what that jump was when there was a problem?
I don't, don't know that.
It was pretty helping, though, I think.
Right.
And another item to keep, by doing 3%, whenever we do a bond, any kind of bond, that's one thing they always look at, are you keeping up with your rates? And that's always, that's always a real plus in our corner. It keeps our interest rates down because they know we're not necessarily going to go back and ask for 25 or 30% at one time.
Go ahead.
No, you go ahead.
I, how, what is the ways that water's checked, then, for the water quality, or what, what's all in that, or that's done yearly, or...
I think it's daily.
Daily, yeah.
Daily, it's all testing.
Yeah.
It meets all the qualifications. If it doesn't, they're...
I mentioned, too, when I moved here from Grand Junction and put regular Grand Junction water in my aquarium, that was the end of my fishkeeping things, and not so here. I don't know if that makes any difference. Maybe they're just tougher fish, but...
Well, we do have kind of a program, the Water Department, I mean, for instance, right out here, we're replacing a lot of those old lines, especially if they're dead-end lines. We're looping them, so the water quality should be better. I mean, I don't really have a problem at my house, but I'm not doubting that there is somewhere. But I, they've made quite a few strides in the last several years, especially with the new pipe and everything. And that's also why we flush those mains every quarter, gets good water back in the pipes.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe there are times when they have to treat it a little bit more aggressively than others, and then sometimes folks notice that, maybe a little bit of a spike in chlorine smell or taste or something, but...
You're absolutely right, especially on the dead-end lines, and that's what Dave's talking about, are getting rid of some of those. There's a lot of things that go into it, too. Maybe when we're flushing lines, their service line may have more corrosion, and it starts picking up, too. We encourage people to think they have, you know, there's a problem with the water, they'll go out and test it in spots, see what the chlorine content is at that certain point.
And we're kind of at the mercy of how the water comes into the plant, how much treatment it has to be. So, you know, continuing to have discussions about how to increase water quality that ends up in our aquifer is a whole nother discussion, but we're sort of at the mercy of what the water comes in and the quality it is, how much it has to be treated and processed. And sometimes that process is more noticeable to citizens.
Rick's over there itching to have a question. You've got two reasons that are listed. One is increased cost of treatment and chemicals on both this and the next one. And the other one is anticipated improvements to those plants. Are you planning to escrow then part of the increase for the improvements, or is this just to go into a big plot, and if there's money left after the increased operational treatment costs, you'll apply it to the improvements?
Well, a certain amount of it is always set aside, anyway. They'll transfer it like plant replacement.
Is that true on this increase as well?
Yes, they are, it's always, yeah, that's, if you look on our budget, there'll be a transfer for plant replacement. So, yeah, so to answer your question, part of it inevitably does go to that.
I'll make a motion we place that on first reading.
I'll second.
Aye.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Sloan?
Aye.
Weetrick?
Aye.
All right, item E, consider first reading of an ordinance increasing wastewater rates by 3%.
And as Rick pointed, no, I'm not very good at this thing. As Rick pointed out, it's, some of it's set aside for plant replacement. Now, when we find out with sewer plant, because for water quality purposes or discharge, we're going to be required to upgrade our plant. We've been notified that. That's all through Iowa, so that's out of our control. And it's all more important that we keep these rates on pace because unfortunately, they may have to go up more than this in the coming years as we look at this plant replacement, depending on how much financial assistance we can get through the state. But I think they were, what, looking at a four, four and a half million dollar upgrade for the sewer plant.
Yeah, at least.
At a minimum. So we've got some big costs coming up.
Could be as high as, what, $10 million?
Yeah, it could be eight to 10 if we do improvements at the existing. It could be, if you had to move to a new plant, it could be double that.
Yeah.
I mean, the, right now, way things are looking, it's make the improvements at the existing plant. And that is in that eight to 12, depending on what options and what processes are used. But it's all based off of the DNR's requirement for nutrient reduction, and the processes that we need to do that to meet these new requirements are not in the plant right now, so they have to be added. So that, that in and of itself is five or six million of that. And then the other improvements are improvement to equipment that are aging out and getting to be at a point where they need to be replaced.
I've moved to place this on first reading.
I'll second.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Sloan?
Aye.
Weetrick?
Aye.
Zamalek?
Aye.
Item F, consider first reading of an ordinance increasing residential and commercial solid waste collection rates and providing for a commercial recycling fee.
This, this has been in committee for some time to look at the old rates. They've studied this a lot. There's quite, there's some information in your pack and about the agenda summary about where the rates have been. Solid waste, which is residential garbage, has not increased since 2016. Again, our rates increase all the time, so they're recommending a dollar on that per month increase. They're also recommending, recycling fee goes up, too. It's been at 350 back in 2008, 370 in 2016, and it hasn't really been raised since. This is a matter of doing business. Our recycling has definitely suffered, and we need to, the committee feels that we need to keep the rates, to raise the rates, at least to keep it solvent.
And I just wanted to clarify that these rate increases have nothing to do with the purchase of the new trucks. It's our, we haven't raised rates for some time. We've done a comparison with other cities, and just the cost of doing business with the trash, and also, you know, Matt can speak on our recycling, how that changed with Genesis leaving, and now we're just changing some things up that, this is something that we've looked at for a while, and we've been without. And you can see in the past years, when you look at the numbers, where we're coming up short, it's incremental. It's just, we're going further and further away each year, and each year, we're not raising those rates. So it's just coincidental that we got these new trucks, but that's not why, paying for those trucks, this is not part of, of why we're raising the rates. It's cost of doing business.
Good point.
And I want to make sure, too, the committee's also recommending a base, a base fee for all commercial building, businesses of $470. Currently, they don't have, they're not being charged for recycling. So that would be $470 a month for commercial businesses.
Are we doing, Matt, are we doing a better job on not putting things that can't be recycled in the bins and stuff like that?
I can't answer that. I have not talked with him for a couple months, I don't think. So I don't know if there's, what the improvement is, but that's a good question. I'll try and touch base with those folks in Carroll. Yeah, we had, we had a lot of room to improve, so hopefully we started. I know we've got up some signage and things, and trying to get the word out a little bit and some social media things, so hopefully, hopefully that's happening.
I move to have the first reading of that one.
I'll second.
Aye.
Weetrick?
Aye.
Sloan?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Item G, consider approval of reimbursable agreement of $37,471.39 with FAA for decommissioning and removal of runway end identifier lights on runway 32 at Jefferson Municipal Airport.
So this is part of the runway extension project. This is for the FAA to, basically, their services, the city is paying the FAA for their services, to decommission those lights at the end, south end of the runway. This is a, basically, an advancement to the FAA that the city makes. They do their work and draw off of that amount, and then any that is not used would get sent back to the city. But also, this is also part of the work that is being covered under the large supplemental grant that we got, the 1.7 million. These dollars are in that grant that is 100% paid, so it ends up that the FAA ends up paying for this service. But it's kind of one department of the FAA being paid to do it, and the other part's paying the city for that service, so. But it's to decommission. Right now, those lights, that system is owned by the FAA. They'll decommission. New ones will be installed that the airport will operate and maintain, and then only the north end would be owned by the FAA, so that would take a little bit more of the responsibility to the airport on those, but they're pretty low-maintenance items.
I'd move to approve.
Second.
Aye.
Sloan?
Aye.
Weetrick?
Aye.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Zamalek?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item H, consider resolution approving settlement and payment of claim by city insurance company.
About nine months ago, there was a claim asserted against the city. There was no lawsuit filed. There was a letter claim by the parents of a resident or patient of Genesis. An incident occurred at the community center while under the, you know, guidance of the person from Genesis. So they made a claim against both, against Genesis and the city. City turned the matter over to its insurance company. We haven't been involved since. So about three weeks ago, maybe, the attorney for the insurance company advised us that they had negotiated a settlement where the city's insurance company would pay $6,000, and then there would be a full release against the city. There would be no money paid by the city. I understand there is also a settlement made with Genesis, but that's under a confidential agreement, and so we don't know what the terms of that are. So, so we're just authorizing, you know, the settlement of that claim so our insurance company can go ahead and make payment. Any questions?
I still move.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Sloan?
Aye.
Weetrick?
Aye.
And Zamalek?
Aye.
Item I, pause funding request.
Is there Mary Kinney?
My name is Mary Kinney, and first of all, I'd like to thank the people that have backed the TNR and the new shelter that we're getting. The problem that pause is having right now is that we're having financial difficulties due to, one thing, COVID, because we had to cancel our biggest moneymaker, which is the garage sale. So that cut us back about $4,000 for the year. And then at Christmas time, when we put out the collection boxes around, there was a lot of confusion as to whether they were donating to the new shelter or donating to care of what we already have. So we didn't get as much income at Christmas as we usually do. So what we would like to do is ask the council to approve an extra $2,000 for us to spend. We have one employee, the rest of us are all volunteers. The one employee works 20 hours a week at $10 an hour, which is very reasonable for what she's doing. But we would like to ask your assistance with a little financial help this year. Are there any questions you'd like to ask?
So then what is the, what's the total amount you're asking?
$2,000 for the, an extra $2,000 for the year. Already pay, I think it's, is it 1,200 or 1,500? Can't remember.
Well, your, the pause agreement called is $6,000 a year.
Okay. So we would like to increase that this year.
Is this this year?
Right now, unless this COVID thing goes on through next year, and then we'll be in a problem again, but just to get us through this year anyhow and go from there.
I mean, you have an agreement that just rolled over that called for 6,000. You can certainly increase it, but we probably need to put it on the agenda for next time if you want to amend that agreement, so.
So you're saying we could approve 6,000, but if it was more, then we gotta...
Well, the 6,000 is already approved. You don't have to do anything for that, but if you want to amend the amount in that agreement, then we'd have to put that on agenda for next time.
I think that's what we need to do.
Okay. Thank you.
So it'll be on the next agenda, you'd see the agreement be 8,000 instead of 7,000.
We don't need to res, we don't even vote on that, right?
Yeah, come here. Just direct me to draw up an agreement for 8,000 and go put it on the agenda for next time.
All right. Item J. Main Street Chamber Quarterly Report.
Maybe this will be the easiest way. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to provide a quarterly update for the new organization Jefferson Matters: A Main Street and Chamber Community. I think most of you know me by now, but I'm Regan Hannigan, the executive director for the new organization. Previously, it was Jefferson Matters: Main Street and Jefferson Area Chamber of Commerce, and then the new name would be Jefferson Matters: A Main Street and Chamber Community. I wanted to start off by just providing you with our new purpose statement, just to give a clear indication of what this organization is about and what our goal is. Our purpose is, our organization's purpose is to support, promote, and preserve the historic downtown of Jefferson, Iowa, while contributing to the greater community's continued vitality. I think it's a good combination of both what Main Street and Chambers stood for in the past, and a few things were teams and committees that were involved with the Chamber and Main Street and how they've changed and shifted, and new teams have been created from both of those organizations to better fit the purpose and reduce any inconsistencies or redundancies that were happening before with two organizations. So I'll start off with our Economic Vitality Team. This now includes ambassadors revamped from the Chamber side. We thought those correlated well together on continuing the growth of businesses and sustaining the businesses in Jefferson. A few projects that they're currently working on are an existing business grant. It's $500 for business owners to financially diversify and grow product based on demand. Another thing besides the ambassadors joining the Economic Vitality Team would be working on a community survey of businesses, of what they want in the community, to try and get a better feel of people in Jefferson who shop here and what they're looking for in Jefferson. So that's just a few projects that that team is working on. And then I'll have a few other members from the different committees and teams talk about what they're doing.
I'm Karen Lottin, and I'm from the design team. I'm actually co-chair along with Mike Palmer. He very graciously attends our meetings with us, and I think that's important because a lot of the design work, we partner with the city on that, so it's very appropriate that he serves on that team. One of the first things that we've done recently is to come up with a new mission statement. Regan would like each of the committees to have a mission statement so that no matter who goes on and off of these committees, it can move forward with a firm mission statement so the work can continue. So our new mission statement for the design team is to provide design education and assistance to strengthen the physical appearance of our downtown and community. My friends on the design committee joke that translated that means we like to make things pretty, so that's kind of our goal. We realized that we had a little bit of money left in our design budget for the year, so we have asked Regan to put out some information on the mini grants that we are responsible for, which is a mini grant for facade and a mini grant for signage. So she has been doing that, and we have had someone that has recently applied for that. So going forward for this year, we will limit that to the Main Street District because the money that has been taken in for this year's budget came from the Main Street investment drive. So going forward next year, that will be expanded to include more of the community because the two, as we do an investment drive, that will include both Chamber and Main Street. We also are responsible for the planters and the beautiful flowers that you see downtown. We have our plan made for fall, so we'll be working on, on getting that done sometime in September. We want to thank the city workers tremendously. We cannot thank them enough for the watering that they do, and also a team of volunteers that I'm not going to name because I would probably miss somebody. But when the city is too busy, for example, during storm damage, they were pretty busy with cleanup, so this group of volunteers watered all the planters around town, and so that, that really helps us out. I hope you've taken note of the city park, we call it the City Parking Lot Planting. It would be north of the Elks Lodge, south of the Muma Peterson Law Firm. Deb Cuserek, there was kind of an unsightly little area there. Deb Cuserek designed a planting for that area, and it's growing and looks beautiful this summer, so please take note of that. And the last thing I'll say is that we are working on a phase two of some Christmas decorations for downtown. We will work within the confines of our budget, so we don't ever like to overspend our budget, so we might be able to do part of it this year or all of it. We're not sure yet. We haven't nailed down our costs for that, so that's what we are working on. I will be doing a segment with Coltrane on tomorrow, I guess that is, for the Let's Talk Friday. So we'll talk a bit more about design if you want to listen to that on Friday. Thank you.
Hi. I'm chairman of the promotion group this year, and also Angie Huser is going to be my co-chair for this year. What we've done is that we have combined the retail revamped and the tourism teams. Those were Chamber teams, and we've combined them all into the promotion team under that umbrella now. Our mission is the promotion team will promote businesses, tourism, and events in Jefferson, Iowa through marketing efforts using print, radio, television, and on social media to drive people to downtown and to our community. First, I'd like to thank the council for the use of the hotel motel funds that we've received. We've been able to run commercials on cable TV. We've done radio spots weekly with ads. We've print ads in our Iowa magazine and the Central Iowa Tourism Magazine. The idea was to go beyond just Jefferson and Green County, to get people to come here across the state, and that's the way you have to do that. You have to market bigger, and those funds have allowed us to do that. We'll continue to have Chamber checks in some form. We're not going, they're not going to be called that, but we'll work basically the same way. And with the holiday season coming up, we do hope that people still will purchase those to use at our local businesses to help support local. We've developed a tourism tab on our Jefferson Matters: Main Street website, so we're trying to make finding out about what people can do here either on a bus tour or with your family, just easier to find. And so we decided to put this tourism tab on our website. So we're beginning to post things under that tab. COVID hit our merchants and our tourism really, really hard this year, but we expect it all to return and grow, hopefully, in the spring and summer. And so right now, we're just laying the groundwork for all that to happen once traveling is safe again. So that's what promotion is basically doing, marketing Jefferson. I'm going to switch hats and do Tower View Team while I'm up here. And COVID wasn't kind to the arts either. However, we did support Roger Eggers' Lincoln Highway Street Art on the museum and the Welcome Center Block, if you've seen that. We also created the mini towers that you see downtown. Thankfully, they sustained minimal damage in that windstorm. They all tipped over, but they weren't, weren't damaged too badly, so we were happy about that. There's a new photo op in Sally's Alley. It's a set of wings that people can stand in front of and get their picture taken. We turned the Read Me Please library that's in that alley space into a Mask Me Please box for several months, and we gave out free masks that were provided by the public health here. So we gave out over 100 of those, and so we helped in that effort with the public health. There's new poetry that's been written by members of our community in the alley, and then, of course, the flowers there are taken care of by Deb Cuserek and Shelley Berger. They do an excellent job of taking care of those. The Ring Out for Art, that also took a hit with the storm, the sculpture exhibit. We did lose one sculpture. Hildy De Bruun's Blue Wings won the People's Choice Vote, and she will receive that extra $500 from Tower View Team, and her sculpture will be on the plaza until next May. So that's kind of exciting for us to have her sculpture here in Jefferson. She's a really well-known artist throughout the state of Iowa. She has lots of sculptures in other communities, very large pieces that are purchased by cities, and so we're really fortunate to have her involved in this, in the Ring Out for Art. Coming up, we're looking forward to another fun scarecrow invasion, and this year it's going to be the time warp edition. You can create a scarecrow that would represent any decade or era or movement. This will be downtown from October 1st through October 31st. This was really fun last year, and the winning scarecrow will see, will, will receive that nifty trophy and bragging rights. Our focus this year with the pandemic was to still offer public art that people could experience and be a part of either in small groups or families or individually. I think we have done that for Jefferson. Arch Alley is ready to roll as soon as that concrete is done. Any council member that would like to visit the artist's studio, please let me know. I'll be glad to hook you up, and you can go out to see it for yourself, what he's doing out there. He will probably put you to work, so you'll need to wear work clothes. But then you can always say that you're a part of the arch too. We had another class, contact me about donating a bench for the space, so that'll be nice. And we've had a lot of community support for that project, and no one is going to be more excited than I will be when it's done. It's truly public art created by the public, and the state is taking notice. We've had people here from the Iowa Art Council. We've talked about it with them. We've talked about it with the Iowa Cultural Department, and so they really all are looking at Jefferson to be the leaders of the arts, and that's what we're doing. That's it.
Hi, guys. I'm speaking to you from the organization committee. This Friday on the 28th of August, we're having a retirement celebration for PEG Briny. It will be at the Thomas Jefferson Gardens, and I will pass out invitations to all of you on the council. We are limiting the number of people there because of the COVID virus, so we are just staying with the council. We also, on that evening, will be making a presentation to you from the Main Street Iowa Awards. You were one of the award winners, and it was supposed to happen in April, it didn't. It was supposed to happen the end of May, it didn't. So we're just going to go with it on Friday night, so please, if you're able to, come. Thank you.
Hello, all. Philip Heisterkamp here from the newest branch of the Main Street Chamber organization is the Events Committee, which is really a carryover from the Chamber side of things. But Events Committee is mildly exciting because I, I would think about the Osborne family who founded Green Bean Coffee, right? So they were exposed to the quaint town of Jefferson, Iowa through RagBri, which came through in 2008, and they were motivated to move to this town and open a business here because of an event that brought them through to town. So I would hold on to that idea and the possibility that if Jefferson continues to have high-quality events such as the Bell Tower Festival, and there's quite a committee, to bring the Bell Tower Festival back to former glory and beyond. What the longevity of Jefferson could look like if high-powered events like that were fueling tourism and fueling just town, local festivities as well. The Events Committee is going to be a new thing with the purpose to plan and put on events that encourage visitation to not only the Main Street District but Jefferson and the county in general, and provide a unique experience to the locals of Jefferson that you would not typically get in a town of 4,400 people, right? So we're excited to roll out events and new ideas and to show off Jefferson and promote ourselves a little bit more. Thank you very much.
Hello, everybody. I'm Jamie Dominic. I'm currently the, the board chair right now, board president. And as you can see, there's a lot of things still going on, even with this COVID pandemic. So great group of volunteers, and Regan has done a great job taking over for PEG, and again, hopefully you can attend PEG's kind of retirement celebration. Did a fantastic job, and Regan's off to a great start continuing to lead this organization. So a few other updates, kind of from the board perspective. Talked about it a little bit earlier about the economic vitality, just as FYI on the city piece, that we did apply for Main Street Iowa, a challenge grant for the Why Not Us group for the, for the building repair. So just more that FYI that that did get submitted. But then also the merger piece, we talked a little bit about that, but that's still ongoing with the Chamber and Main Street. And again, it is into a new entity moving forward. So I kind of heard some of the different groups, the teams that have kind of come together to work together and create new mission, vision statements as a group and be able to empower and move together closer, as we talked about previously, than being more efficient with the resources that we have, that you guys are a great supporter of that. And again, we have a big plans moving forward. We'll have our strategic planning session in October, and again, that will kind of lay out our plans for 2021, and that will also include our budgeting piece as well. A little feedback on the Iowa Great Place application. As we mentioned before, we were, did not receive that designation this year. We applied last year as a countywide and did not get that, and the feedback kind of was to focus on Jefferson. And the feedback we got this year was essentially we need a new plan. We use the Vision 2020 Plan, and that kind of focused countywide. So we're going to be kind of using our strategic plan from October and using that for the vision, or the Iowa Great Place Plan to apply in 2021. And so it was really good feedback and great, you know, disappointed that we didn't get it, but it was nice to hear that and kind of set us up for success going forward. The other piece, we do have Main Street Iowa coming to attend our board meeting next month in September, and again, this is kind of their, they'll be attending virtually, but it's good to get them involved as well. them involved as well. Any questions for myself or Regan or any of the other committees? Yep?
The Main Street Grant, Jamie, when do you hear back if the Why Not Us group gets that?
Do you want to hear back?
Yeah. Do you know when that, when you hear back on that, if you, if we got it or not?
I can't remember. I know it's quicker than before because they can, they can have a, be able to start on it. Before it was in November, and they pushed that out, so it is quicker. I don't know if it is.
I don't know how they fixed it.
October 7th is two days from the grant this year. So it'll be like October, late October.
Okay.
Jamie said you didn't win the Iowa Great Places, but you were one of the finalists.
Yes, yep, we got to move on, and Deb put a lot of work into that, being selected for a site visit. And again, they came again and were just inspired by all the great things that were going on, and it was, you know, a lot of great comments on the tour, felt really good about it. But when they went back, kind of their discussion, it was just a little bit off from our application, which, again, we reused the Vision 2020 grant, which we didn't want to spend a lot of money on the forecasting of it with our onsite visit. But now, after talking with them, we can do it internally, which is good to know.
We were one of five finalists, is that correct?
No, that was the, that was the Great American history. That was the game.
Any other questions or comments?
Well, just that, I mean, I, I don't think promoting the city is, is ever going to, you know, fail. I really am happy with what you guys are doing. I think that, that it's going to pay dividends on and on.
Thank you, guys. It's a lot of great volunteers, and Regan kind of steering the ship of the group, and a lot of hours that a lot of people don't see behind the scenes of, you know, everybody believes in this place and wants to succeed and do well, so thank you. And thank you again for your guys' support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
On to the reports. Jim?
As I said earlier, Chestnut Water Main Project is getting down to the end. They got services and stuff. They were not here last week or this week. I think they had to go to another emergency project or something that they had to get done. So they should be back next week finishing up there. The shared use path seating on Central is going to happen very soon. They should be finishing up the Greenwood section concrete this week. After that, they'll likely move to other projects. They are also the contractor that is on the Arch Alley project, and so as part of the Arch Alley, we have the pre-con on Friday. I would anticipate a start date somewhere end of September, somewhere around in there, but we'll know more after that pre-con on Friday. The Runway Extension Project, we have the pre-con on Thursday, and I don't have a start date as of yet on that, but I would suspect it would be fairly quick after that to do the grading and storms who are worked this fall yet, and paving would be next spring.
Thank you. Roxanne?
No report.
Bob?
No report.
Mike?
Suggested to me about when the priority surveys are due. Thank you, Matt, for, those priority surveys, if you can get them to me the next day or two. If you need another copy of it, I did send out a word, I could certainly send it out. Got about half of them. That's it.
All right, thank you. Departments. Mark?
Got anything? No report. Nick in here? No? Nick.
Harry?
No reports today.
Matt?
Are you doing any more law enforcement talk? Are we done, are you, were you done with that tonight? Or did you have more to say in your report time?
I didn't know if anything, when we get down to PD.
Okay, I was just going to suggest, as we're in this time of maybe some transitioning or trying to be as creative as possible, that we would possibly explore the idea of kind of reimagining a little bit of what the makeup of our police department is, if, you know, we expand out to include social worker and, and animal control person to kind of diversify rather than just strictly officers in each position, whether that's, you know, E82 with, again, the county maybe for animal control, or E82 with the hospital. Just throwing out some ideas since we're in this period of looking and thinking about things, and maybe I'm totally off base with all of it, I don't know, but just some things that kind of been reading and looking into some different ways, different places do it, but just planting some seeds, I suppose. That's all I have.
Yeah. Thank you. Darren?
Parks and Rec, Matt, and I guess in general, their, their ideas are, they would like to have more programs, maybe even beyond the exercise bike and the things like that, things that are creative, even like a cooking class or a pottery class and things like that. So they're looking into that. Concerns they have is handling, which is going to be an impossibility probably, but social distancing once school's out, and kids are probably going to be using that more and more. They had to close the pool. I heard someone being a little disappointed in that, but their lifeguards go to school. Their lifeguards go to college, and, you know, they were already a little shorthanded the way it was, so that's just the way that goes. Once they start school, that's kind of the end of it.
Yep.
I was at school board, and they did mention, I, I think this is, once again, in agreement with them and the person that's thinking of the old middle school, but they wondered what our three, what our thoughts were on that project there on Harrison Street, or if we have any or whatever. But I think they have to contact, you know, there's got to be some alignment, and maybe that's none of, none of our business really, I don't know. I mean, it's their property and, and things, but that. And then I did have a citizen ask me about, and once again, this is probably the school and their arrangement with the DOT, but was concerned, I think, with the new high school being out there and that Highway 30 is busy and things like that. And I guess, Mark, now you, I know you're shorthanded like crazy, but you guys had, always had a patrol down at the old high school. Are you guys planning on doing similar, you know, you probably won't need an officer, you know, when it becomes a middle school because there's not going to be as many kids driving down there. Are you planning on having some?
Yeah, there'll be a few small changes. We will not be rolling stop signs out there by the, by the administration building anymore because that's not a school any longer. I had some conversations with superintendent and others. We'll still hopefully do our school patrols where we are constantly traveling those paths around the schools in the morning when they start and in the afternoon when they get out. Still planning on keeping that going. I guess concern probably won't be so much this year because the trail kind of ends at the cornfield right now, it doesn't go to the high school. But once that gets up and going, have to pay attention to the Central Street crossing. Four lanes of traffic, 40 mile an hour speed limit. See how much traffic we have there. We might have to touch something different there, but streets, we are looking at 35 mile an hour speed zone change. That would be from Lincoln Way all the way out to 220. So slow that down a little bit.
On Gremlow, you're talking about?
Yes, the two entrances there on Gremlow. One's over a hilltop, so it's kind of hard to see, so streets, I think we looked at that, and I think that's probably going to go ahead there. Highway 30, it's 55 there at Gremlow, and it's probably going to stay 55. That's a state highway. We don't have any control with that.
Right.
But otherwise, I think our school patrol hopefully pretty much stays the same.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And I know I can speak on the pool. I think that they were the, very proactive on getting that pool ready to go, even though we hadn't had clearance from the governor. And as soon as the governor said pools could open, it was open, and, and they've done a great job all year, and unfortunately, when those kids go back to school, we can no longer keep everyone safe, so got to close it down. But I thought it was a very successful year for the pool. Glad we opened. There was a lot that did not.
Darren, I wasn't able to make the Park and Rec meeting. Are they still talking about doing the Wednesday after-school programming? Did that get discussed?
Like, like what?
I just lost the name of what it's called, but it's an early out on Wednesdays, and so they offer the, they offer a couple, an hour and a half of?
The school's not going to have early outs this year with all the late starts and stuff like that.
Okay, that's easy.
Yep, but I do think, you know, it was so easy for them to walk just from the middle school to the rec center. I think the school maybe is going to, I, not 100%, but from what Denny said, maybe the school's going to have a bus that goes from where the new middle school will be down and then drop kids off at the rec center.
All right, thank you. Pat?
Yeah, obviously, from the PD Committee, retention is probably our biggest issue right now that we've been talking about. As we've been talking through that, we've been looking at different structures, you know, what we're invested in PD going into the future, a little bit to Matt's point. I know Mr. Mary talked to the chief the other day about some of our options, so we're just going to continue down that road, see what we can get done.
Absolutely.
I think the la, I think the other thing I'd like to say is, again, thanks to city crews, all the departments for the cleanup of the town, and also I did see a lot of citizens out there kicking in a little help, too, so thanks to everybody who helped there.
Exactly. Dave?
I attended the Main Street Chamber meeting. They're combining, and it's coming along really good. Obviously, you saw that tonight. Also, I would like to reiterate what he said. All of our city crews have done a tremendous job in the last couple of weeks. When we were looking at six or eight weeks worth of cleanup, there's a few piles around right now, it's all, I mean, it's been pretty impressive from, from the street guys, the PD guys, everybody, they've all done a tremendous job.
Yeah, that's all I've really got, is just blown away at how quick everything got cleaned up. You know, originally, I thought we were looking at two, three months at least before everything's cleaned up, and we're pretty well there now. That's all I've got.